Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By roll call, see that all council members are present at this time. We'd like to welcome those of you who are here tonight with us in public, as well as those who may be watching on home tonight, channel 56 or some other communication device. We'd like to begin tonight inviting those to stand with us in prayer. We've asked council member Alsop if he'd lead us in order of prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Kukavas. Would you please stand?
For heavenly Father, we thank you for being here tonight, and we thank you for the many blessings that you've given this city through this winter, with the moisture and for the sunshine. And we just ask you to continue to just let this place prosper in your name. We just thank you for these young men that's here tonight to get their awards for the wrestling. We just thank you for the grace and the mercy you gave for them and the strength and endurance to do the things that they needed to do to win their state championship. We ask that you be with all the women and men overseas and at home, serving us as this great nation and protecting us to do the things that we need to do and that we want to do. We ask this in your precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. My pledge is to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to just take a moment here and express our gratitude and our sorrows to the Kevin Brackney family. We're sorry for his passing, and our heartfelt condolences go to his family and his wife. Mr. Brackney was influential in our community and the schools of superintendent. As a city of Cholo, we had an opportunity of having several agreements where we worked well with the school of being able to partner together in a lot of the different things that was able to form. And Mr. Brackney was always supportive of the city and the things that we were able to accomplish together, and we appreciate, and he will be missed in our community. You know, he's a big man to play racquetball against, and I had a couple of opportunities. I made sure I stayed whale away from that forearm of his, but it's great. But, you know, he died doing what he loved. He died exercising and riding bikes, and I think that's a... But he loved the White Mountains, and he wants to rest here. And so hopefully we can pay respect to him this Saturday at 1:00 at the LDS State Center will be his services. And again, Terry and family, our hearts go to you. We'd like to... First item tonight is call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city may do so at this time. Know that your time is restricted to three minutes, and council members cannot respond or answer questions. We do have one person at this time is asked, Commander Terry Hill of the VFW Post 9907.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm standing here tonight to talk to you about what I asked Ms. Reed had to pass out, and that's the Veterans of Foreign Wars Priority Goals for 2016. If you read through the pamphlet, it does cover primarily at the federal level, but it does come down to the state level and even down to the county and to the city with areas that you can help us try to support the veterans in our community. Also, on Saturday afternoon, starting at 4:00, we are having the spaghetti feed so we can fund Honor Flight for Tina Wells, a World War II veteran, who enlisted in the Army in 1942 and rose to the rank of major before she retired. So that's all I have, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. I'd like to introduce Scott Kyle, who is the junior vice commander now and will be the next commander of the VFW Post starting July 1st.
Thank you, Scott. Good to have you with us tonight.
I'll be in to visit, which is...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else call to the public? Seeing no one else moved up close, call to the public and come back to our consent calendar. First item tonight we have is a proclamation proclaiming February 2016 Cholo Junior High Wrestling State Championship Month in the city of Cholo, consideration of Resolution R. 2016-04, adopting fees for the library services provided by the city of Cholo, and consideration of a memorandum of understanding with Navajo County Public Health Service District to dispense medications during a public emergency, and also consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting February 2nd, 2016. We have a motion by Vice Mayor, second by council member Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time I'd like to read a proclamation here, and if I could have the coaches after I read this, if they would come forward and accept this proclamation. Whereas on January 29th and 30th, the Morana High School in Morana, Arizona, the Cholo Junior High School Wrestling Team, after more than 1,500 matches in front of a crowd estimated at 3,000 fans, dominated the competition and won its third straight championship, a back-to-back win to last year by an impressive 49 and 1/2 points. And whereas the city of Cholo recognizes excellence and dedication by the wrestlers, their parents, coaches, and support staff, the school administrators, the student body, and the community. And whereas the city of Cholo recognizes outstanding sportsmanship by the wrestlers, their fans, and their coaches. And whereas the city of Cholo recognizes the commitment, discipline, and desire of each wrestler and the team collective determination. Now therefore, I, Darryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2016 as Cholo Junior High School Wrestling Championship Month in the city of Cholo, and urge all citizens in the community to acknowledge this tremendous third achievement, dated the 16th day of February 2016. If I could have Coach Brandon Clark, Tim Williams, Steve Allen, and Nando Arredondo come up, please. Give these guys a hand. We have a T-shirt for each of the wrestlers. I'm going to call their names, that they'll just come down in order and just kind of file right across the front here and stay here, and we'll get some pictures here. We'll give the weight class, and then we'll give the name. 63-pound Breck Williams. 68-pound Reggie Howell. 73-pound Colton Jaeger. 78-pound Andy Wilhelm. 83-pound Tanner Fellows. 88-pound Ty Applegate. 93-pound Rex McRill. 98-pound Craig DeWitt. 104-pound Carter Long. We got 111-pound Aaron Nafke. 118-pound Connor Swiger. 133-pound Ridged Lee. Ridged, you really weigh 133. All right, good. 142-pound Logan Mills. 167-pound Anthony Avila. And a heavyweight Mitch Ballenby. We got Coach Clark, Coach Williams, Coach Allen.
Very good.
Heavyweight Coach Clark. Lightweight Coach Williams and middleweight Coach Allen.
Could you guys turn around so everybody can get your pictures?
Pretty awesome to be three-time state champions, back-to-back. That makes a great statement, Now, we challenge you guys to do that when you graduate from high school, juniors and seniors of high school. Let's bring a state championship there, okay, guys? Stay together and do great things. Good job. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Parents, thank you.
You ought to give them a chance to get out of here. Mayor, you want to give them a chance to leave?
Yeah, they probably have homework to do, so if you'd like to let them leave...
Yeah, we'll be done in 15 minutes, but if you guys want to get a head start, you know, you're well. Lunch line, isn't it?
No hesitation.
Thanks again for being here.
That's funny.
Yeah, first item in new business tonight is a consideration of Resolution R. 2016-05, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Cholo and the state of Arizona Department of Transportation for constructing improvements to East Union and something else here. I love technology. North 11th Street authorized associate budget transfers, Mr. Hemisaw.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Cholo receives surface transportation project funding, or STP, funding every seven years as outlined in the NACOG subregion rotation schedule. STP funding in the amount of $658,386 has been allocated to the city for fiscal year 2018, as shown in the tip. And this money is administered by the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT. Pedestrian access improvements to the intersection of East Union and North 11th Street include installing ADA ramps, sidewalk, pedestrian lighting sleeves, irrigation sleeves, and drainage improvements that include replacing the two existing concrete box culverts for Whipple Wash at the intersection. The project's design, through the federal process administered by ADOT, has been completed by utilizing $131,000 of the funds. Construction portion of $526,708 was anticipated to commence in FY 2018. However, due to current funding levels for FY 2016 and delays to other projects in the region, NACOG has asked the city to consider moving the construction of East Union and North 11th Street project to FY 2016 or this summer. The changes have requested to be made at the regional tip. ADOT requires an intergovernmental agreement, or an IGA, prior to proceeding with the project, which identifies the state and the city's funding responsibilities. The IGA is provided for the project's construction portion only and contains the following funding breakdown. Federal funds is $496,686, and then the city match, which is 5.7%, or $30,022. The old downtown pedestrian improvement project along North 9th Street and the southern portion of East Hall between 8th Street and 9th Street are anticipated to commence in March of 2016. The city has requested staggering the construction schedule to minimize the impact of the downtown area for the two projects. East Union and 11th Street Improvement Project will advertise by ADOT in spring of 2016, resulting in the construction beginning near the end of June or early July. The old downtown pedestrian improvements should be nearing completion at that time. Budgeting for the city's matching funds has not been anticipated, as we anticipated doing that in 2018. So staff's requesting utilizing council contingency funds for the match for the summer. Staff recommends that the council adopt Resolution Number R. 2016-05, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Cholo and state of Arizona Department of Transportation for the East Union and North 11th Street project, accelerate the project to 2016, and approve the associated budget transfers. The IGA and the resolution are attached, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions at this time? Not a look for a motion. Councilmember Crenton?
I move to adopt Resolution Number R. 2016-05, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Cholo and the state of Arizona Department of Transportation for constructing improvements to the intersection of East Union and North 11th Street and authorizing the associated budget transfers.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Second by councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor?
Just a comment. I know this might be a dumb question, but I'm just curious, when ADOT administers some of these projects, do they do a breakdown of what they do for their fees? By any chance, or they just take a big, huge lump sum and throw it in the kitty and say, well, I mean, some of the fees are outrageous of what they're charging to an administrative project. And I personally think they're ripping us all off by doing that, but it is what it is. Do they do a breakdown?
We've asked before of, you know, what's being billed to a project during the design phase, and it's difficult to get details on what exactly is being billed. There's many different hands at ADOT that are touching it in different departments as it kind of makes its way through there. When it comes to the construction phase, there's usually three breakdowns they have. They have a small contingency in engineering, and then another post-design services. That totals about 20% of the project, and that's pretty much common to see that 20% added to a construction of a project when administered by ADOT.
20% of, no matter the cost of the project, it's...
No matter. That's what we've seen in the past few STP projects and similar federally-funded projects administered by ADOT.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Next item is 7B, consideration of award of construction contract for East Union, North 11th Street Sewer Realignment Project, Cholo Project S. 0316. Again, Mr. Hemisaw.
Thank you. So as we receive the STP funding, and we've accelerated the project for the East Union and North 11th Street improvements, those improvements once again are due pedestrian improvements and the rebuilding of box culverts for Whipple Wash. In order to do that, a realignment to the sewer main and at the intersection and the water, and a waterline realignment at Whipple Wash needs to be completed. The waterline realignment you might see currently taking place is being done by city staff. Sewer line realignment requires installing two drop manholes at the intersection to lower the sewer approximately three feet. The sewer main will be replaced heading north along 11th Street approximately 350 feet until positive grade can be restored. The project was designed by city engineering staff. The engineer's construction cost estimate was $102,000. Project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Rolling specialty contracting at $85,372.90, patchy underground excavating at $106,870, E.W. Parker Incorporated at $107,121.20, Western Grade LLC at $107,720, and Navapatchy Equipment at $150,000. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the East Union and North 11th Street Sewer Realignment Project, city of Cholo Project S. 0316, to rolling specialty contracting in an amount not to exceed $85,372.90. The bid's tabulation should be attached, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments here, Vice Mayor?
Just a real quick comment. It's nice to see that some, all these local companies bidding this and bidding it very closely. Some of them, ones we've seen in the past, were so outrageous. I think now we're getting some... I think it's beneficial for us, I think, that they're all so close, but it's nice to see all the locals and how close they are on bidding these jobs.
I think there was three within a thousand bucks there. It was a tight group.
Pretty nice to see.
Yeah, I just want, on this project, we need to remember as, you know, citizens, as well as people who are administering the project, it does affect some of our businesses in that downtown area, and whatever we can do to maintain their businesses staying open as much as possible, as well as some of us citizens going down to that area, venturing through the construction and patronizing those businesses will be much appreciated. You know, we've had that. And I want to tell you, thank you, Shane. I know it's not easy. You've had to work with some of the business people and property owners down through that area. You've done a remarkable job of communicating and making things happen. So hopefully it will continue to be a great project as we continue to beautify the downtown part of our community. I look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to award the construction contract for the East Union and North 11th Street Sewer Realignment Project, city of Cholo Project Number S. 0316, to rolling specialty contracting in an amount not to exceed $85,372.90.
Do we have a motion? We have a second by councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is Item C, consideration of ordinance Number 2016-02, authorizing the exchange of parcels of real property of substantially equal value pursuant to ARS 9-407, authorizing agreements for sale and exchange of real property and approving pasture lease with Lloyd Reedhead, the city manager and the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start, and Mr. Brown will fill in if questions come up. We need some additional comments on it. The city, basically, the city owns some property out by First Knoll, and that's near the cinder pit out on, off of Highway 60. And that's on your maps, and it shows it as parcel number one, and there's approximately 13.72 acres in that property that we're going to be talking about this evening. For some time, the adjacent property owner has been interested in purchasing that property to expand the cinder pit operations. The property owner has leased the property from the city for many years in exchange for providing cinders to the city. We have other property owners in our community, Lloyd and La Dean Reedhead, who approached the city to see if we had any interest in purchasing their property in the meadow. City staff believes that this property, which is approximately 20.68 acres, would be beneficial and useful to the city for open space and/or park development in the future. Under the Arizona Vice Statute, if we exchange any property, I'm going to go through this, and then we'll explain what's really happening here. It has to be done by ordinance after it's been published in the local newspaper. The exchange of property must be for substantially equal value. A notice of intent has been published in the local newspaper, as is required by the state statutes. In the proposed agreement before the council this evening, Perkins Cinders will purchase approximately 4.6 acres of the Reedhead's property, which is in the meadow, for $64,400, and will exchange the property for a portion of parcel number 210-01-022. That's the property near the cinder pit, consisting approximately 13.72 acres. The city will then purchase from the Reedhead's remaining property in the meadow consisting of approximately 16.08 acres at $13,940 per acre. The Reedhead's will also sell the city's nine irrigation shares that they have with the property. Their irrigation shares in the Cholo Irrigation Company for $1,200 per share. The city will pay for the closing cost and survey cost. The Reedhead's have also requested that they be allowed to continue leasing the property to pasture livestock on it for a period of three years. It may be part of a sublease if the interior fences are removed. We don't know what's going to happen the next couple, in the next couple of years, but we may do some removing of the interior fences. We may have a master lease on the property, and the Reedhead's would be able to sublease a portion for their animals. The city also will erect a monument acknowledging that the property was part of the Reedhead homestead. We purchased several years ago, over 10 years ago, about the same amount of property from Lloyd Reedhead's brother, Marvin Reedhead, and that same statement about the monument was in there. We're waiting for the Reedhead's to give us wording for a plaque to put on a monument in that area. Ordinance Number 2016-02 authorizes the mayor to execute the necessary documents to trade city-owned property for privately-owned property as shown. Morgan, do you have that map? It'll be easier if we show it on one of these maps. That master room. So the city, it's hard to see on there, but... Okay. Anyways, there's a portion. You see the black parcels in the middle of the map? That's the meadow there. The lower portion of that map property is the property Perkins will purchase, and we will trade that property for the property out by the cinder pit. The remainder, the larger parcel outlined in black, the city will purchase outright from the Reedhead's. Our real estate administrator has reviewed the transaction and finds the parcels to be of substantially equal value, and the statutes also authorize exchange of the parcels of substantially equally, equal value. Staff recommends that the council approve the attached agreements for exchange and purchase of real property and approve the pasture lease with the Reedhead's. Upon completion of this purchase, the city will own all the meadow property that was designated for purchase by the city. After the purchase and exchange is complete, we will, the city will survey the entire meadow property to make sure all the property lines close, and we have agreements in place with the Reedhead's and other property owners that we, they will sign the documentation necessary to close and make sure that it's a complete survey. But basically, if you look at the overhead on, at this time, all the property outlined in red, the city has already purchased, both north and south of this. It wraps around the Hampton Inn on the south end and goes past the bridge in the floodplain area on the north end. So we will own all the property along that section of White Mountain Road, as I mentioned, has been designated and, for purchase, has been designated or shown in surveys and our general plan documents as a piece of property that the citizens of Cholo believe that the city should own for preservation and open space.
Right. I think it's a kind of culminating a long-term venture here that's been, been in place for the city to make this a beautiful, you know, people just refer to Cholo as the meadow through there. It's something a lot of people relate to. It's great. Any other comments, questions? Let entertain a motion, then. Councilmember Hatch?
I move to adopt ordinance Number 2016-02, and further move to approve the agreements for the sale and exchange of real property and the pasture lease agreement with Lloyd Reedhead.
The motion?
You just got to read.
Does Ann need me to say something different?
Read ordinance.
Read ordinance, I'm sorry. I have Ann. Read ordinance Number 2016-02 by title, only since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, authorizing the exchange of parcels of real property of substantially equal value pursuant to Arizona Vice Statute, Section 9407.
Okay. Thank you. Will you do another motion there, Mr. Hatch?
Yes, I will. I move to adopt ordinance Number 2016-02, and further move to approve the agreements for the sale and exchange of real property and the pasture lease agreement with Lloyd Reedhead.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Second by councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you, guys, for keeping me. Thank you, guys, for keeping me on the right page that I clicked to the other page, so it's kind of fun here. Next item they have is Item Eight, summary of current events. Any council members wishing to share any current events may do so. Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that Sholo Little League registration is going on right now. There's a couple ways you can register your son or your daughter for Little League or softball. You can go online, register at www activ.com, and you can register your kids there. For February 20th, they'll be at the City Carpet Gym from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and you can register then. Or if you have any other questions, go ahead and feel free to give me a call at 928-242-1807. Also, went to a Main Street meeting this last week, and looking forward to the farmers' market starting up again. It was a great success last year. There's a lot of different things that Main Street is looking at doing throughout the city, and going to put some proposals out to do some more beautification downtown and everything. So if you'd like to have any information about the farmers' market or sign up, please call City Hall and talk to Steve North, and he'll be happy to lead you in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alsop. Any other reports? Just report, I was able to attend the League of Cities Executive meeting they had down in Phoenix this last Friday. Some interesting things with the legislature that's going on right now. A lot of bills have been, you know, submitted this year and a lot of things that affect local communities. We're probably seeing a little more onslaught of people trying to take away our local control that we have as cities and towns, and so we'll continue to do what we can to maintain our control that we have locally here. This time I'll turn the time to city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind the council and the public that tickets are available for the Neil Diamond Tribute Concert by Diamond in the Rough. It's Friday, April 8th, 7:30 p.m. at the Sholo School District Auditorium. The tickets are $12 each, and you can get your tickets by, at the Recreation Department at City Hall or at the Aquatic Center. Again, that concert will be Friday, April 8th at 7:30 p.m. Work on the Aquatic Center exterior is being done in preparation for painting. The crews are getting ready to, our public works crews are getting ready to, for two public works projects, a drainage project on 10th Avenue and a waterline project on 11th and Huning Downtown Sholo. That relates to one of the items that you had on your agenda tonight. And as, from the library, in addition to storytime for children ages zero to five and adult computer classes, the library has, is offering several monthly, their new monthly classes for events of all ages and events for all ages. Children ages six to 14 can enjoy the Lego Club and Creative Club, both offered once a week, very popular. Ages eight to 18 have a code club on the first Thursdays of the month, and due to the high demand of the, those that want to participate, tickets are required and available beginning the first of the month, of each month at the library. And you also, you can check out these events and many more events going on in the city at the website at sholaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, scheduling meetings, if there's any meetings that need to be scheduled. See none, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yes, so moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Hatch. See no other business, solid adjourn this meeting.